Good evening, Roma ISD family and guests. We're about to start this meeting. It is now 6:00 PM and I call this special call meeting of the Roma Independent School District Board of Trustees being held this Wednesday, November the 5th, 2025 to order. Let the record show that this meeting was duly posted according to the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. Agenda item number one is roll call. Board Vice President, Mrs. Yadira E. Barrera.
Here.
Board Secretary, Mrs. Mary Lou G. Cruz.
Here.
Board Member, Mr. Jaime Escobar Senior.
Present.
Board Member, Mr. Evie Garza Junior, absent. Board Member, Mrs. Karina Mascorro.
Here.
Board Member, Mr. Jesús Rios Junior, absent. And myself, Board President, Mr. Ricardo A. Pérez, present. Let the record show we have a quorum in attendance at this special call meeting. Ladies and gentlemen, agenda items number two and three will be our invocation and pledge of allegiance. This evening, our presenters will be Roma High School seniors. With the invocation, Ms. Sasha Alana Yere. She's a Roma High School senior and daughter of Nechosen La Cuesta Yere and Veronica Vianey Areano. She plans to attend the University of Texas, Rio Grande Valley, and major in Biology, Pre-Med. And leading us in the pledge of allegiance will be Alessandro Salinas, also a Roma High School senior. He is the son of Noe and Graciela Salinas. He plans to attend Texas A&amp;M University at College Station and major in Mechanical Engineering. Ladies and gentlemen, would you please stand for the invocation and the pledge?
Good evening. Let us bow our heads. Lord, we ask you to preside over this meeting and to bless all our endeavors. During this meeting, as issues of importance to this district are discussed and deliberated, help our leaders be guided by you, Spirit. May they be wise in their discernment, balanced in their judgment, fair in their decision, and visionary in their planning. Though they may at times have differing views, may they listen to one another and be guided by the common goals. May they always be mindful in their words and actions of what is best for all children in our schools. Help us to build community united in harmony of love and service, watch over our families at home, at work, and at school. And help us to share a loving concern for each other at all times. We ask this through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under a God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Thank you, Sasha, and thank you, Alessandro. We will now move on to agenda item number four, which is student staff recognition. And the first item will be the recitation of the character trait. The presenter will be Ms. Jacqueline Aymar Sines. She is a Roma High School senior, and she is the daughter of Jesús Angel and Maria Lucero Sines. She plans to attend the University of Texas, Rio Grande Valley, and major in Music Education. Jacqueline?
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, Superintendent Gonzales, and guests. My name is Jacqueline Sines. I am a senior at Roma High School, and it is a great honor to be speaking here today. I am here before you to talk about something very impactful, compassion. Compassion can change lives really better and impact people in more ways than one could think possible. Compassion is understanding someone might be having difficulties and going above and beyond to find a way to help them. It's lending a hand to someone that needs help without expecting some kind of reward or praise in return. Giving someone a hug or making them laugh when they are having a rough day can also be a form of compassion. I know everyone has their own struggles, but just taking a few seconds or minutes out of our day to help someone goes a long way in making our community a better place. Someone could be having a terrible day, and a simple compliment could change their mood completely. Today, I want to challenge everyone present to strive to act on their compassion and find a way to help someone out. It's okay to start small. Smile more, listen to your friend rant without complaining, pick up a paper or pencil someone dropped, and slowly, these acts will pile up and even inspire others to act on their compassion. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jacqueline. And now we will have Mrs. Yadira Diaz, our Director of Federal Programs, who will be making... I take it back. The presentation will be made by the Director of Performing Arts, Mr. Daniel Renteria. And this is our second six weeks Gladiator Wall of Fame. So, Mr. Renteria, take it away.
Good evening, Board President Perez, members of the board, and Superintendent Gonzales. I will be presenting a group of students who are being honored as members of the second six weeks Wall of Fame for the 2025-2026 school year. I now call on Roma High School students Alessandro Salinas, Sasha Alana Yere, and Jacqueline Aymar Sines, so please come forward. Our first student is Alessandro Salinas. He is a senior in the top 10% whose parents are Noe and Graciela Salinas. Alessandro is currently serving as Vice President of the Roma High School Student Council, which is also serving as Secretary in the Texas Association of Student Councils. He is also CEO of this year's Roma High School Robotics Team, and last year, he earned first place in Engineering Notebook and first place in Marketing Presentation. Alessandro is an AP Scholar and demonstrates outstanding college-level achievement through performance on AP Exams. Alessandro has recently been accepted to the Engineering Program at Texas A&amp;M University. Also from Roma High School is Sasha Alana Yere. She is our eighth-ranking senior, and her parents are Veronica Areano and Nechosen Yere. Sasha has consistently been an A Honorable Student throughout elementary, middle school, and high school, and is currently an AP Scholar, demonstrating outstanding performance on AP Exams. She was a member of the state and nationally-recognized Roma Percussion Program from 2019 to 2024, performing in various events. Sasha has also been an active member and officer of various school and community organizations, including Student Council, American Sign Language Club, Film Club, Girl Scouts, and Junior Catholic Daughters of the Americas. Roma High School's third student is Jacqueline Sines. She is our seventh-ranking senior, and her parents are Jesús and Maria Sines. Jacqueline is an AP Scholar, demonstrating outstanding college-level achievement through performance on AP Exams. She has earned a chair in the 2025 TMA All-Region Orchestra and earned a Division I Solo Rating at the State Solar and Ensemble Competition for Orchestra. She is currently First Chair Violin Concert Master. Jacqueline is also currently the National Honor Society Secretary, the Math Club Fundraising Organizer, and Choir Secretary. Congratulations to Alessandro, Sasha, and Jacqueline from Roma High School. I now call on Ramiro Barrera Middle School students Alexa Munias, Esteban Trevino, and Alessandro García. Our first student is Alexa Munias. She is the proud daughter of Maria Luisa Munias. Alexa is an outstanding role model, showing great effort and dedication both in class and in her activities. Alexa is committed to school, which is why she's consistently on the A and B Honorable. She's got a positive attitude in every class, plus, she's already getting competitive as a UOL Spanish Poetry participant. When she's not in the classroom, Alexa keeps busy. She loves teamwork and staying active, finding enjoyment in sports like swimming and volleyball. Alexa has clear plans for the future. She's determined to master her reading and math star exams, keep getting awesome grades, and eventually place first in her UOL competitions. With this kind of dedication, she's definitely set for a super-successful time in middle school and beyond. We are so proud of Alexa Munias and can't wait to see all the great things she does next. Also representing Ramiro Barrera Middle School is Esteban Trevino, son of Esteban and Aidalu Trevino, an exceptional student selected for the Wall of Fame. Esteban is a highly accomplished student. He is consistently an A Honorable recipient, a designated GT student, and maintains perfect attendance. His school activities include competitive sports like cross-country and baseball. Beyond the field, he sharpens his mind as a participant in UOL Number Sense and embraces his cultural heritage through Conjunto. His involvement extends far beyond the school day. He is an active member of the Baquero 4-H Club, showing commitment to his community and plays on a traveling baseball team which requires significant time and dedication. Looking ahead, Esteban has set an incredibly high bar for himself that reflects both his passion and his intellect. He aspires to play for Major League Baseball while continuing his education at UT Austin, where he plans to major in Mechanical Engineering. We are honored to recognize him for his accomplishments and look forward to seeing him achieve these incredible goals. Ramiro Barrera's third student is eighth grader Alessandro García. He is the son of Ibeque Gonzales and Juan Sanchez. Alessandro exemplifies academic excellence and a true passion for learning, especially in the sciences. Alessandro consistently sets a high bar in his studies. He is enrolled in advanced classes across science, social studies, and math, demonstrating his capacity for complex work in multiple subjects. Alessandro is one of the few students who achieved a perfect score on the recent Social Studies Benchmark Exam. What truly makes Alessandro stand out is his approach to science. Teachers describe him as a student who thinks like a scientist driven by curiosity. He loves to be challenged and raises unique questions that push classroom discussions further. Outside of academics, Alessandro has a strong interest in robotics, showing his desire to build, solve problems, and apply his scientific thinking in a practical way. He is also enthusiastic about basketball and plans to try out for the team. Looking ahead, Alessandro plans to successfully graduate high school and pursue a master's degree after attending college or university. Congratulations to Alexa, Esteban, and Alessandro from Ramiro Barrera Middle School. I now call on Roma Middle School students Isabella Gonzales, Savannah M. Flores, and Michael Vazquez. Our first student is Isabella Gonzales. She is an eighth-grade student, daughter of Mr. and Mrs. Francisco Gonzales. Isabella is a dedicated A Honorable Student. She is part of the RMS Varsity Band, Student Council, Gifted and Talented Genius Hour, Cheer Team, Cross Country, and is one of our Gear Up ambassadors. She is also a UOL participant in Modern Oratory, Impromptu Speaking, Ready Riding, Prose, and Duet Acting. Great job, Isabella. Also from Roma Middle School is Savannah M. Flores. She is a seventh-grade student and is the daughter of Mr. and Mrs. Xto Flores. Savannah is a gifted and talented student, recognized for being an all-A Honorable Student last year. Savannah is an active member of the RMS Student Council, Cheer, and Varsity Band. Savannah is also part of this year's RMS UOL Poetry and Duet Acting Team. Excellent job, Savannah. Roma Middle School's third student is Michael Vazquez. He is a sixth-grade student and is the son of Mr. and Mrs. Casinto and Nancy Vazquez. Michael is a gifted and talented A Honorable Student who obtains master scores in reading, math, and science star tests. Michael is a member of the Battle of the Books Team and plays the tuba for the RMS Beginner Band. Michael is also a member of the RMS UOL Team and participates in mathematics, number sense, and calculator skills. Great job, Michael. Congratulations to Isabella, Savannah, and Michael from Roma Middle School. I now call on Rafaela T. Barrera Elementary students Yelene Lopez, Joseph R. Cuawi, and Isabella Morales. Our first student is Yelene Lopez. She is a kindergarten student in Mrs. Linda Morales's class. Her parents are Yacalín Carlos and Roberto López. Yelene is an A Honorable Student. She performs above grade level. Yelene mastered her benchmarks with perfect scores. Also from RT Barrera is Joseph R. Cuawi. He is a first-grade student in Mrs. Cecilia Alanís's class. His parents are Dr. Hema Del Moral and Mr. José Reynaldo Cuawi. Joseph is an active UOL participant. He plays defense for the Roma Legends Soccer Team. Joseph demonstrates top performance at IXL. Also from RT Barrera Elementary, the third student is Isabella Morales. She is a second-grade student in Miss Genesis Cantú's class. Her parents are Ankel Morales and Letizia García. Isabella excels in reading comprehension and leads thoughtful classroom discussions. She is known as a math wizard for solving challenging problems with confidence and accuracy. Isabella is outspoken, positive, and always eager to help and inspire her classmates. Congratulations to Yelene, Joseph, and Isabella from Rafaela T. Barrera Elementary. I now call on Emma Vera's Elementary students Valeria, Ainoa Acevedo, Pablo Alberto García, and Darlen Canales. Our first student being recognized is Valeria Ainoa Acevedo, a fourth-grade student. She is the daughter of Mr. Marcos Aníbal Acevedo and Mrs. Luz Elena Alvarado Medellín. Valeria is an exceptionally bright and intelligent fourth-grade student at Emma Vera Elementary. She is a straight-A student who continuously strives for academic excellence and takes great pride in her work. Valeria is well-known for her honesty and integrity, always doing what is right even when no one is watching. Her positive attitude and strong character make her a true role model among her peers. In addition to her outstanding academic achievements, Valeria proudly represents Emma Vera Elementary through her participation in UIL, where she competes in Spanish Poetry and Art Smart. Her creativity, confidence, and passion for learning shine through in everything she does. Valeria is also one of the top AR readers on campus, demonstrating her love for books and her commitment to expanding her knowledge. Beyond academics, Valeria is always willing to help her classmates, whether it's explaining a concept, offering encouragement, or lending a hand when someone is in need. She dreams of becoming a teacher in the future, inspired by her passion for learning and her desire to help others. Outside of school, her favorite hobby is playing soccer, where she enjoys teamwork, staying active, and having fun. Her leadership, kindness, and dedication make her an exceptional student and a valued member of the Emma Vera Elementary family. Also from Emma Vera Elementary is Pablo Alberto García. He is a fourth-grade student, and his parents are Juan Pablo García Garza and Adit Muñoz Salada. Pablo is a student who leads by example at Emma Vera Elementary. He encourages his peers and helps create a positive learning environment in the classroom. Pablo earned a master's achievement level on both the reading and math star assessments last year. Pablo's academic accomplishments are a result of his goal-oriented mindset, driven by his determination to set and achieve both academic and personal goals. Pablo was selected as Student of the Month for exemplifying the character trait of the month, honesty, by consistently demonstrating integrity in his work, taking responsibility for his actions, and earning the trust of both his teachers and classmates through his transparent and respectful behavior. Pablo's academic growth, leadership, and commitment to excellence continue to make a positive impact on his classroom and school community. Also from Emma Vera Elementary is Darlen Aidana Canales Agion. She is a fourth-grade student, and her parents are Mr. Ramón O. Canales Santos and Mrs. Damaris A. Agion Ramos. Darlen is an exemplary student and a distinguished representative of Emma Vera Elementary School. She consistently demonstrates outstanding leadership, academic excellence, and a strong sense of responsibility. Darlen's dedication to her studies and her commitment to helping others reflect her integrity and character. Through her positive attitude and exemplary conduct, she serves as an inspiration to her peers and embodies the core values and high standards of Emma Vera Elementary. Darlen also participates in UIL Spanish Poetry and has received multiple recognitions and her awards for her outstanding performance and dedication. She was selected as Student of the Month for exemplifying the character trait of honesty. Darlen consistently demonstrates integrity in her work, takes responsibility for her actions, and earns the trust of both her teachers and classmates through her respectful and sincere behavior. Darlen's academic dedication, leadership, and commitment to excellence make her a positive influence and a valued member of the Emma Vera Elementary family. Congratulations to Valeria, Pablo, and Darlen from Emma Vera Elementary. I now call on FJ Scott Elementary students Derek Lial, Yesenia Peña, and Dayani Rocha. Our first student recognized is Derek Lial. Derek is a fourth-grade student and is the son of Deborah and Adiel Lial. Derek's commitment to academic achievement has resulted in earning Honorable and mastering both his reading and math star tests, a true reflection of his hard work and dedication. He is a member of the school's robotic team and an accelerated reader participant. An active and engaged learner, Derek participates in both reading, writing, and oral reading, UIL. Derek also showcases his musical talent in the After School Music Programs Honors Group. He is not only a dedicated student, but also someone who is always kind, respectful, and responsible. Outside of school, Derek enjoys crafting and coloring. Derek aspires to be a soccer coach in the future. FJ Scott proudly presents Derek Lial. We are thrilled to celebrate your successes. Also representing FJ Scott Elementary is Yesenia Peña. Yesenia is a fifth-grade student and is the daughter of Adit and Juan Peña. Yesenia is a motivated student who has maintained Honorable and perfect attendance distinctions, demonstrating consistent dedication to her academics. Yesenia's love for reading is notable as an active participant in the Accelerated Reader Program. She is a member of the fifth-grade UIL Ready Riding Team. In addition to her academic success, Yesenia is a member in the After School Music Programs Honors Group, where she continues to explore her creative talents. Outside of school, she enjoys reading, drawing, and spending quality time with her siblings. She is known for her kindness, respectful attitude, and reliability. Yesenia's goal is to pursue a career in teaching. FJ Scott is proud to present Yesenia Peña, who undoubtedly has a phenomenal future ahead of her. Dayani Rocha is also representing FJ Scott Elementary. Dayani is a fifth-grade student and is the daughter of Angeni Guerra. Dayani is an outstanding student who maintains a stellar academic record, earning Honorable Status. She currently competes in Science UIL. Dayani is an avid reader and participates in the Accelerated Reader Program. Alongside her academic accomplishments, Dayani is actively involved in the After School Music Programs Honors Group, where she further nurtures and showcases her creative abilities. In her free time, Dayani enjoys reading books, playing volleyball, and riding her bike. She consistently shows compassion, respect for others, and a strong sense of responsibility. Dayani hopes to inspire others through a future career in teaching. FJ Scott is extremely proud of Dayani, continuing to strive for excellence. Congratulations to Derek, Yesenia, and Dayani from FJ Scott Elementary. I now call on Delia G. García Elementary students Sarah Lopez, Dalit Anali Quiro... I now call on Delia G. García Elementary students Sarah Lopez, Daleth Anali Quiros, and Robert Lee Ramírez Jr. Our first student is Sarah Lopez. She is the proud daughter of Nora Itzel García and Ricardo López Jr. Sarah is a pre-kinders student in Mrs. Janet Resendes and Mrs. Silvia Garza's pre-kinders classroom. She has shown an eagerness to learn, a curious mind, and a joyful spirit in everything she does. Sarah has grown tremendously in her early literacy skills. She mastered all her letter names and sounds. She mastered all word families and she is now in the Read Naturally Reading Program. She has learned to read forty-seven out of fifty sight words. Her hard work, determination, and positive attitude have made her a role model for her classmates. She is a true friend to others and enjoys helping with classroom jobs. We are so proud of all she has accomplished and excited to see her continue to shine as she moves forward in her learning journey. Keep up the amazing work and continue to shine bright, Sarah. Also from Delia G. García Elementary is Daleth Anali Quiros. Daleth is a pre-kinders student in Ms. Brenda Alanis's and Mrs. Marianela Garza's class and the proud daughter of Natalia González. Daleth is an outstanding and bright student. She is always eager to learn and ready to succeed. Daleth has shown determination in everything she does. Daleth accomplished many goals in her early literacy skills. She was the first in her class to master her letter names and sounds, and she is now in word families. In addition, Daleth is also a great writer. She writes her name and last name with beautiful penmanship. Daleth is an A Honor Roll student. She shows confidence and shows leadership in the classroom. Ms. Alanis and Mrs. Garza are very pleased to have Daleth in their classroom. She is always so loving and willing to help. They are extremely proud of Daleth and they know that she will accomplish so much more in life. Daleth, your determination and eagerness for learning will be the foundation for your success tomorrow. Always believe in yourself and believe that you can accomplish anything you desire. It is an honor to have Daleth Anali Quiros form an integral part of the DGG Warrior Family. Delia G. García Elementary's third student and proud warrior is Robert Lee Ramírez Jr. He is an active learner in Mrs. Marianela Lopez and Mrs. Veronica Treviño's pre-kinders class. His proud parents are María Vázquez and Robert Lee Ramírez. Robert Lee Ramírez Jr. is an intelligent, responsible, and dedicated student. He attends class regularly, arrives on time, and is always prepared to learn. Robert actively participates in lessons and listens attentively, demonstrating a strong desire to succeed. His consistent hard work has earned him high grades in all subjects and a well-deserved place on the A Honor Roll list. Robert has a true love for reading and his commitment to improvement has helped him excel in Read Naturally where he is currently reading at the kindergarten level 0.8. He recently mastered all his high frequency words. Robert is respectful, kind, and compassionate, always showing care and consideration for his classmates. Mrs. Lopez and Mrs. Treviño are honored to have such an outstanding student in their classroom. With his determination, effort, and big dreams, Robert Lee can accomplish anything he sets his mind to. Congratulations to Sarah, Daleth, and Robert from Delia G. García Elementary. I now call on RC Science Elementary students Osziel Alessandro Pérez, Renata Basaldúa, and Persephone Lilo García. We are honored to formally recognize Osziel Alessandro Pérez, a fourth grade student in Ms. Virginia Peña's classroom for his outstanding academic excellence and exemplary achievements. Osziel is the proud son of Lucila Yanet Silva and Olmedo Pérez. He has consistently demonstrated academic dedication and a passion for learning. Throughout his elementary years, he has maintained honor roll status and achieved master's performance levels in the hundredth percentile on both the Star Reading Language Arts and Mathematics Assessments. His love for reading is equally impressive. Through his active participation in the Accelerated Reader Program, Osziel earned the title of Super Reader, having read over one million words last year. Beyond the classroom, Osziel has showcased exceptional talent in academic competitions. He competed and placed in UIL Number Sense and Spelling and earned fifth place in mathematics at the Starr County Fair Academic Rodeo. When he grows up, Osziel aspires to become a doctor, channeling his curiosity and love of learning to make a positive impact on the world. Congratulations, Osziel Alessandro Pérez, on your remarkable accomplishments and bright future. Next, we honor Renata Basaldúa, a fourth grade student in Ms. Virginia Peña's classroom for her outstanding academic achievements and dedication to excellence. Renata, the daughter of Arisei Serna and Jesús Basaldúa, has demonstrated remarkable commitment to her education. She has maintained perfect attendance and been on the honor roll throughout her elementary years. Her hard work and perseverance have earned her master's performance level in the ninety-ninth percentile on both the Star Reading Language Arts and Mathematics Assessments, reflecting her exceptional academic ability and determination to succeed. Renata also proudly represents our school through her participation in UIL oral reading and ready-writing competitions, showcasing her strong communication skills and creativity. Inspired by her love for her school, Renata aspires to one day teach at Roel A and Celia R. Science Elementary and later pursue a career as a pediatrician where she hopes to help children feel better and make a difference in their lives. Congratulations, Renata, on your hard work, determination, and remarkable achievements. We are proud to recognize Persephone Lilo García, a dedicated third grade student in Mrs. Brenda Cantú's classroom for her excellence and commitment to learning both in and out of the classroom. Persephone, the proud daughter of Jennifer Marie Hernández and Guillermo Andrés García, exemplifies academic dedication and enthusiasm for learning. She has achieved perfect attendance, earned a place on the honor roll, and demonstrated an exceptional love for reading through the Accelerated Reader Program where she became a Word Master in just three weeks. Beyond academics, Persephone proudly represents our school in UIL oral reading and spelling competitions, showcasing her confidence and expressive talent. When she grows up, Persephone dreams of becoming a pop singer and songwriter inspired by her musical role model Billie Eilish. Her creativity, determination, and passion will undoubtedly lead her toward a bright and successful future. Congratulations, Persephone, on your outstanding achievements and inspiring dedication. Congratulations to Osziel, Renata, and Persephone from Roel and Celia R. Science Elementary. I now call on Veterans Memorial Elementary students Eric Giovanni Castillo, Valentina Martínez, and Allison Tovar. Our first student is Eric Giovanni Castillo. He is a fourth grade student and his proud parents are Jaritza Guerrero and Samuel Cantú. It is an honor to recognize Eric for being a kind, hard-working, and respectful student. Eric is always well-behaved and treats others with kindness and fairness, making him a great friend and role model to his classmates. In addition to his positive attitude in the classroom, Eric is also a proud member of the Veterans Memorial Elementary Boys Basketball Team where he demonstrates teamwork, leadership, and dedication both on and off the court. This year, Eric has demonstrated impressive academic improvement through his focus, effort, and a strong desire to do his best. His determination in both his studies and athletics truly sets him apart. Also from Veterans Memorial Elementary is Valentina Martínez. She is a third grade student and her proud parents are Virginia Bassam and Antonio Martínez. Valentina is a highly motivated and dedicated student who approaches her studies with enthusiasm and determination, consistently striving for excellence and showing a genuine love of learning and reading which makes her a remarkable student. Valentina is an active participant in the third grade UIL Spelling Team where she demonstrates leadership, perseverance, and a commitment to personal growth. Her willingness to take on challenges and represent her school proudly reflects her outstanding character. Valentina is a quiet and shy student known for her kind heart, excellent manners, and deep respect for others, treating her teachers and classmates with genuine kindness and consideration, and creating a positive welcoming environment that truly exemplifies what it means to be a model student and a wonderful young person. Veterans Memorial Elementary's third student is Allison Tovar. She is a third grade student and her parents are Jacqueline Grimaldo and Juan Fernando Tovar. Allison is quiet yet powerful, kind, respectful, and always thoughtful in her actions by showing others what it truly means to be caring and dependable. In the classroom, she continues to impress with her strong work ethic and enthusiasm for learning as an excellent student who enjoys participating in discussions and contributing meaningful ideas, but most of all, Allison is the kind of friend everyone hopes to have, always ready to lend a helping hand and bring positivity to those around her. Allison proudly represents BME as a member of the Patriot Dance and Cheer Team where her teamwork and spirit shine brightly. Congratulations to Eric, Valentina, and Allison from Veterans Memorial Elementary. Congratulations to all these students, their teachers, and their parents. I present to you the Wall of Fame Students for the second six weeks.
Well, distinguished colleagues on the Board of Trustees, Superintendent González, honored educators, proud family members, and most importantly, our exceptional students being recognized here tonight. As we gather in this building of learning and leadership, we do so with our hearts full of pride for what these young gladiators have accomplished up to this point in our current academic year. Their dedication, perseverance, and commitment to excellence shine brightly, illuminating the path for others to follow. To each student being honored this evening, congratulations. Your achievements are not merely marks on a report card. They represent countless hours of focus, overcoming challenges, and the pursuit of the highest potential. The Gladiator Spirit lives in each of you, and our entire district stands taller because of your accomplishments. Yet, behind every successful student stands a foundation of support that cannot be overlooked. Tonight, I wish to recognize, all of us would like to recognize, a truly exceptional group: the parents, the grandparents, and extended family members of Gladiator Nation whose unwavering commitment makes these achievements possible. Your love is just not spoken. It's demonstrated in early morning rides to school, in late-night homework sessions, in the sacrifices made without complaint, and in your presence here tonight. You are the unsung heroes of academic success, the first teachers, and the most dedicated advocates our students will ever know. At this moment, I invite all family members of our honored students to please stand and be recognized. Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in offering not just an applause but our heartfelt gratitude to these individuals for their unconditional support of their students. Thank you all for making Gladiator Nation a community where excellence thrives and where every achievement, large or small, is celebrated with pride. This is why all of us will tell you, that all of us that sit up here on this podium, not this podium but this dais that is here, will tell you that this is our favorite meeting where we get to celebrate our students and also celebrate the foundation of their success, which is their families. Congratulations again, students. Congratulations, families. Thank you for being with us here today. You're more than welcome to stay as we continue with the most interesting part of this meeting. But it's our business portion of the meeting. You're welcome to stay if you want to. If not, you can start, if you haven't taken photo ops, with the posters that are in the hallway. You may do so at that time and go out and celebrate as well. Thank you once again for being here with us this evening. Thank you once again for being here with us this evening. You're not working tonight, are you? No, no, go out and celebrate.
Thank you.
Well, if our admins will please come forward so that I can see you in the eye. All right, we'll continue with the meeting. Agenda item number five, Public Comments. Presenter District Superintendent Mr. Carlos M. Gonzalez.
Mr. Perez, nobody signed up for public comments?
Thank you, sir. We'll go on to agenda item number six, which is Consideration, Possible Action, to Grant Permission to the Roma High School Orchestra and Roma High School Choir to Travel to Florida in the month of April of 2026 for their end-of-year trip. Presented will be our District Performing Arts Director, Mr. Daniel Renteria, Mr. Renteria, if you have any voice left.
Yes. Good evening, Board President Perez, members of the board, and Superintendent Gonzalez. The Roma High School Choir and Roma High School Orchestra are requesting permission to travel to Florida during the first week of April 2026. I did attach a letter on board book with more details.
Do any of my colleagues have any questions for Mr. Renteria?
This trip will not affect any of their testing. We already cleared that with the principals, right?
Correct.
And this is an optional trip?
Yes.
No performance or?
No performance.
Okay, any other questions?
And the amount that's said here, the students are responsible to pay that amount themselves or their families?
Yes, correct.
They're raising funds for it.
Correct.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Renteria, both for this presentation and for the presentation of the Wall of Fame. I know that that's a chore sometimes having to read all of that information out. But I saw you take two swigs out of that water bottle, so that kept you going. Thank you, sir. At this time, I'll entertain a motion over Agenda Item Number Six as presented.
So move?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? If not, there's a motion on the floor by Trustee Escuela and seconded by Trustee Barrera to approve Agenda Item Number Six as presented. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Five in favor, none opposed, two absent. Motion carries. Now you can begin making plans. Agenda Item Number Seven, Employment and Resignation of Professionals and Paraprofessionals. Presented, our District Superintendent Mr. Carlos M. Gonzalez.
Mr. Perez and members of the board, I ask that you approve the employment and resignation of professionals and paraprofessionals as listed in board book.
Thank you, sir. Is there a motion?
I shall move that we approve the employment and resignation of professionals and paraprofessionals as presented by Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mrs. Cruz. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Ms. Mascorro. Any further discussion? If not, there is a motion on the floor by Trustee Cruz and seconded by Trustee Mascorro to approve Agenda Item Number Seven as presented. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Five in favor, none opposed, two absent, motion carries. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number Eight, Adjournment. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I shall move to adjourn.
You don't want to say?
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, there is a motion by Trustee Barrera and seconded by Trustee Mascorro. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
I think that's five in favor, none opposed, and two absent, motion carries. It is now six fifty-two? Is that correct?
Fifty-three.
Six fifty-three. I don't have mine. Six fifty-three P.M., and this special call meeting of the Roma High School District Board of Trustees held this Wednesday evening, November 5th, 2025, is now adjourned. Of course.
Some highlights. You have some highlights right here of students in our Performing Arts Department that have either advanced to region or area. Here's a little.
We want to, of course, wish our band the very, very best as they have qualified for state as Area G Champions. And this should be a very exciting time for them. We wish them the very best this coming weekend, is it?
Yes.
Monday?
Monday.
Nine fifteen A.M.
That's right, it's an early, it's an early step-off in prelims for the Gladiator Band at nine fifteen. And then finals will be later on in.
On Tuesday.
Oh, no, that's right, it's Tuesday.
Yes.
The following day. And you said something about Bands of America?
Yes.
Bands of America on Saturday.
On Saturday.
On Saturday, so they will, that's a good practice for state. So that Bands of America will be in San Antonio as well, is that okay?
That's on Saturday at two forty-five P.M. at the performance time. And on Monday, that's for state.
Very good, very good. Well, we wish the Gladiator Marching, Gladiator, the Gladiator Marching Band the best of luck, and everyone, all parents and boosters that will be going on this trip, have a safe trip to and from. We appreciate your attendance at this meeting and wish all of you a most enjoyable rest of the night and week. Good night, and blessings to all of you. Beat the Alice Coyotes, which will be Friday night. Until next.